It's recognized. Option three.
One second before we move on. That option. Was it discussed in the committee that instead of bringing in the students every other day, maybe bring in Group A Monday and Tuesday? Group B Thursday and Friday? Then maybe use that Wednesday? For maybe sanitizing the buildings, cleaning, and giving the teachers some prep time?
It was presented, yeah, that was discussed as an option.
What was the cons against that, I guess, what would be? Because for the way I'm seeing it, again, trying to imagine this, God bless the people going to be doing this. Because, you know, we sit here once a month and we make these decisions, then we just walk away. Then everybody gets beat up. So I'm imagining Group A coming in Monday. Then they come back the next day, it's the same group of people.
So there were a lot of differing opinions on, on giving a teacher the entire day. Where the teacher does asynchronous learning for one entire day. So that was discussed at the school reopen committee. The, the outcome of those discussions, and there was many differing viewpoints, as there always is and will be, is that it's going to be more powerful to embed additional prep time per day versus one entire day for, for staff. And, and really, to be honest with you, that hasn't been decided, that hasn't been rolled out, but these are parts of the discussion I'm sharing.
Please repeat that, I didn't think.
Sure, instead of the, the one full day.
So, yeah, Group A comes in Monday.
Yeah. Group A comes in Monday.
Not, not about the full day, but I think what you're asking for trustee Barry is more same students, two straight days. So you don't maybe have to do as much cleaning, do a deep clean maybe on a Wednesday. Other group of students come in on Thursday, Friday. That one was presented, I believe, in the committee.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
So I was saying, I was trying to find out why was it shut down if?
It was.
It's, we could still do it, it was more of just.
Oh, no, well, my response was, was that we were looking at giving more prep time. We're more favorable to giving more prep time, the, the committee, the team, not the committee.
Each day.
The team, and the, um, as we looked at it throughout the leadership team. Um, we looked at that giving more prep time per day would be more effective than giving one full day of no service, no, um, interaction with students. So we wanted to maximize student's interaction with stu-, the time interact that teachers had with students. But we also recognize that the teachers need more prep time. So we'd rather build it into each day of giving them more prep time than to have one entire day. Because those other days are going to be extremely difficult for them as well.
And I'll just say, you know, what my, I talked about this too, uh, when, when it came in cabin. And I just said, well, then you're just, you're losing a day of instruction for students over the two week periods. That's the choice you can make, you know? But the reality is, is then you're getting less in person. I mean, so that's a choice you can make to do that.
We're all in agreement, our teachers are just, I mean, we just keep pushing more on them, pushing more on them. They need some time.
We can, you know, like I said, we, you know, if, if we prefer that kind of option.
I don't expect that teacher to be, you know, get two days in person. You know? Actually, five days in person, but then, you know, when do they, when do they do the other work? I mean, obviously, we're not paying anybody overtime.
Well, and that's something we taught, we worked with Jane on and talked about, you know, with asynchronous. And so what happens is this, because you're having two groups, two days are basically, you're planning for, um, you know, it's a repeat. So it's like you're planning for that session, almost like in the high school where you'd have multiple classes. But you'd be planning one day for two days of in-person instruction. Which, you're going to see the options, you can say it may not even be a full day. It could be a four hour, uh, which is the other thing that we discussed.
The next option, we'll get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's really a lot of options, we can do it.
There's a lot of questions because we're pretty much reinventing schools.
Yeah, I mean, and that, and there's no bad, like, I think any of the ideas that came up, uh, were good, and they all have advantages and disadvantages. So this plan has advantages. The advantages, like you said, you, you more prep time and you don't have them in as intensively. And, uh, but the disadvantage is you lose that day of instruction. So it's just, it's just, you know, if you want to phase it in, you could do either one, if we could get some.
You said that twice, you lose a day of instruction, I mean, what's, what's?
Well, with the students, so like over a two-week period, you would.
Oh, so three, two, three, two.
Yeah, because you get, students get three, instead you would just be doing two, two.
Two and two.
Yeah, so, and the way we worked it out with the, and we told the, you know, to think of planning, and Jane and I talked about this, and Shannon helped us with this, is to think of your planning over a two-week period, because that, you know, in one week, some students will only be there three. So we, we kind of did it like, so like the end of a Friday would be the same as the next Monday, the second Monday for planning.
So Group, Group A comes in Monday, and I'll get to your question, I'm sorry, if Group, because I'll lose it if I don't.
Go ahead.
If Group in, Group A comes in Monday, Group B Tuesday, what's going to happen in between when you're cleaning? Aren't you going to have to deep clean the building and pay more expenses?
You don't have to deep clean, what you have to do is all the requirements in the plan, which is touch points and bathrooms and tables. But you don't have to do what we would call that deep clean that we did back in Whitmore. But you definitely need to do a lot of cleaning every day. And if you did have students in for longer than four hours, you have to do touch point cleaning even during the day, which is required.
But, I mean, if you bring in a completely different group of kids, okay, well, I guess, some of my questions.
But your Monday, Tuesday ideas.
What, what, Mary?
Uh, can I, can I note, can I just note, I mean, we're talking about instructional. But I'm also trying to remind myself to consider liability and vulnerability for infection particularly. Because, uh, we're worried about learning, of course, that's the reason that we have school. But on the other hand, safety is a priority. The whole reason we're doing so much of this is safety. So if we lose that, I mean, we're required to do certain things, but our focus has to be also as well. We have to constantly remind ourselves about, uh, the safety factor. And the safety factor is not just in instruction in person. It's in transport, it's in cleaning, it's in food service. We know that people can get reinfected, we know that the, the virus stays on surfaces. So I, I want to just remind myself and everyone else that we need to consider instruction, but we also need to consider all the other factors.
Trustee Lane, thank you for always bringing us back to the basics. Yeah, we kind of get so engaged in this that we forget. So we, we thank you for that.
Can I comment?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure. Go ahead.
Well, and I would just say too, that's exactly why when we talked to the community, and last month we had so many parents commenting, saying, get back in person. And one of our comments was, we were looking at the data and the health and safety. So the board in here, and, and, you know, not to compare, but we made the decision based on the data here in Dearborn for health and safety.
Sure, sure.
We, we went fully online because of that. And I think you guys have taken, done wise decisions, and the data show that that's what we should have done last, um, you know, the first two months because of where we were at. So I, I think in that, and you guys have seen, you know, as parents email me, that's what I'm saying in most of my response. You guys get some of them, some, it's like, we have to weigh that health and safety with, you know, the, 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 I demand or whatever you say, the parents need to have students back in school. And so that's that balance, I totally agree with trustee Lane and president Barry. And that's where, where is that balance when we think it's safe? And that's why everything will be ever-changing, because, uh, and that's why it's so important we have great nurses that are working with the county health department. Because things could change even when you, if you do approve coming back Monday, Tuesday, or whatever it is. What if the week after we have cases, we have, we'll have to adapt, so.
We don't want to give the, the deep cleaning idea. When it was presented at the school reopen committee, it was presented as, um, for childcare. And so whatever the reason is, we want to do what's right. And so, um, I just don't want to give the, the facade that there's some major cleaning that's going to happen on that day. Because the reality is, is at the end of the day, the custodial staff that works at the end of the day will be disinfecting the touch points and doing their cleaning as they typically would, it wouldn't be on that day. So that was part of what we talked about as well.
They're all trained for that, and they, they have some of these machines too, that look like a, a Ghostbuster, where they can go through the, the, um, at the end of the day and they can, it's like a spray.
And that's part of the sanitizing and cleaning, so are we saying we are going to do that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Monday night? Or are we not?
Every day, every night, every night will be, will be, we have to sanitize like that every, it'll be every day, it'll be every night.
In between, the four-hour thing is, is what, is what's being required?
Yeah.
To just do a, a, you know, doorknobs and, and.
Correct.
Counter, that kind of stuff. Just a quick wipe with a, you know, with a sanitizing swipe.
So every night will be the regular cleaning for COVID, and they, they know that our chemicals that we got through PPE, the virus, as far as that is not strong, as far as the, the ability to kill it is, is, it's a weak virus that way, that the chemicals will do that. But the difference would be if we opted for a full day of students, then you wouldn't be doing that evening-type cleaning. You would be doing the touch point cleaning, it may not just be the custodians, you may need to have other staff that would help. Yeah, yeah, because you have to, the touch points include the, the doorknobs, the surfaces, the bathrooms, handles, those kind of things. But when you do the evening cleaning, it'll be a heck of a lot more than, than that. It would be, you know, like a nor-, going through the whole building and making sure, so.
Trustee.
And that's why we ordered those machines.
Yeah, um, I, I kind of want to go back to, we've got, we've got the three options here. And, and the first concern with the option one was transportation.
Down the line, right?
Down the line. But quite frankly, can't we modify what, we might start out with a half-day, five-days a week to get the kids back into the building? And then when we get ready, it could be months before we get ready to bring in the, um, transportation issues with the upper level. So by then, we might rethink what option we were going to with the, um, elementary. We don't have, I don't want everybody to get stuck on one point or another, is what I'm saying. Because this is going to not be written in stone. And, and, you know, we're, we're going to pull a lot of, you know, rabbits out of the hat, so to speak, as we move forward and see what works and what doesn't, because none of us have done this before. And we know that we're, you know, we might start with this and then say, eh, you know.
We got to adjust.
It's not, yeah, we got to do something else. So I don't, I, I'm, I'm just making the suggestion that we don't get stuck on looking and, and adding on to something that we're going to be rigid about. We, we could change this completely.
We can change it later.
Yep.
Trustee, but, trusty Thorpe?
Along the lines of getting stuck, uh, you mentioned that there's multiple options. We've only gotten to the slide for option two, and we're already talking about the other ones, and most people haven't seen them. Uh, so if we could possibly move through the other options and then come back with the questions on everything, I think it might be more helpful for the people in the audience.
So we talked about option two. So option three I highlighted and I put new option because, um, in all honesty, the board did not get this option well in advance. Like, we try to give everything to the board well in advance. The administrators, elementary administrators came up with this, they were excited about it. They really were like, hey, can you just consider this, please, share it? And, and we really do our best to listen to everyone that gives us all this information. And so this is, this is what we ca-, what they came up with. And it's in-person from eight fifty-five to one o'clock or one thirty PM. And so this schedule, if you think about the way things are being done right now for elementary, this schedule mimics that, but it's in-person. Okay, so eight fifty-five to one or one thirty PM, you got two groups of students, group, they attend every other day. And then, um, the advantages, but they're dismissed from school between one and one thirty. And the advantages of this option is that it's really more effective implementation of, about, with, uh, social distancing, because you're not serving lunch. And lunches would be a challenge, because you're going to have like four different lunches or five different lunches staggered in order to spread the kids out enough. Or they'd be, some of them would be eating in their classroom with boxed lunches. And so we can do a better job of social distancing, um, with this option. There's, the four-hour touch point disinfecting is more obtainable, because the kids are only there in the building physically for four hours. It's also more appealing, because it maximizes the time that the kids get with the teachers. Where with the last option, it was, or the first option, it was three hours and three hours. And maybe just a little bit under three hours, actually, where the kid's in school. Because of all the transportation back and forth, it really cuts into the instruction time and the time with the kids. When I say instruction time, I have to say that I, I'm a firm believer that teachers are huge component of students' mental health and wellbeing. And so when I say instruction, I include social, emotional needs, um, from that rapport with their teachers under that umbrella. Um, and then also, this is what I had just touched on briefly before, is that teachers can get additional prep time in the, those last two hours of the day. So teachers would receive additional prep time for asynchronous planning and feedback, and troubleshooting Schoology and Zoom and everything else that they come across throughout their day. And the way that, that would be possible is, and we haven't worked out what specials would look like in this plan yet. But the specials would either be, um, at one thirty, after, like, virtually. Or it could be what it is like right now, where the kids have, say, I'm a fourth grade classroom. And so on, every day at ten o'clock, I have a different special. So all the fourth grade has music at ten o'clock on Monday. And then they have PE at ten o'clock on Tuesday, and that also gives the teacher a break over those four hours. But I can tell you right now, from my own first graders, the, the teacher is, is online from eight fifty-five till just about one o'clock with a lunch in there. And so they would, the time from one thirty to three fifty-five would be their lunch prep. And then additional prep for asynchronous. Because asynchronous is taking a lot more effort and time than what someone might imagine. So that's another option.
This one would, in a different way, would give that extra prep, like you said, the day, instead it's breaking it into every day. And it is an advantage for the, the, and, you know, they brought it to me too, um, after it came from the principals and the, we talked about it heavily Friday. So I wasn't able to get it in Board Breeze, because Board Breeze hit on Thursday. I put the general outline in the other plans. But this one, after the principals talked about it, really, you know, there, there is some advantage to what you said. Crawl a little bit before we start speeding into things, and this plan does provide that.
And I have to add, um, I have it up here, I, I just didn't say it yet, because I jumped to the, the advantages, because we always talk about all the challenges, so it's refreshing to talk about advantages. Is that for some families with working parents, dismissal time at one o'clock or one thirty could be a challenge for families.
That's the disadvantage, yeah.
And so that's the disadvantage of this.
Trustee, but.
The other thing I was thinking with any of these models is, uh, especially at this level, the elementary level. If you have more than one elementary student, and we go into half-days or every other day. If you have multiple kids in your, and you, and you have Kid A going on this schedule, and Kid B and Kid C going on this other one, it, it, it's going to be.
And then add secondary kids in, which we could also.
Well, I'm not even going to go there at that point. So would we be able to, um, gear it so that entire families could all get on Schedule A or Schedule B?
Yeah, I, I imagine a principal doing everything under, anything possible in their scheduling to make that happen for, for families. It, it, you know, it's tedious and it's time-consuming, but so is everything else that we've done, but.
It would be another, yeah.
I think the way to easily do that, and then the principals can look at it, you basically would take it out alphabetically, right? Because then those students would be the same last name, same last name, so you'd go alphabetical, and that would make sure that the same families are in the same days.
Good point.
I, one quick question is, on this option, it says that the students attend a full day. We're defining a full day in option three as four hours.
Oh, yes.
Right?
Yeah, let me just, oops, go back, hang on.
Does this meet the, the, I don't know what the change was from the state.
The amount of instructional time?
About seat time, yeah.
Because they will have asynchronous time then, that they would do assignments, so that's how you get, that's how you're able to do that.
They'd make up the difference at home.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, I just want to make sure that they haven't changed anything when it comes to starting in-person.
No. No, nothing. It's still based on, you know, we have to ma-, you have to make the decision, you know, our recommendations, and then the board votes.
It's corrected, trustee.
Thanks. I see.
So, you know, and, and what, just, I'll just say too, like, what is just happening here at the board level? We've been in so many meetings, and guess what's happening, the same kind of dialogue, and it's going even more in-depth than it happened at the committee, you know? So the committee, I mean, we've been having weekly crisis meetings, and that's been the only topic on the agenda, basically, is potential return. So it's been, you know, there's a lot of preparation going on and a lot of thoughts, and there's a lot of good ideas. And there's differing opinions to ultimately come to what we think is right, and that's why, you know, we, we wanted to bring you guys options.
And right when you think you have it figured out?
And you may want to tweak the options that we bring, which is fine. We're all just, I think we're all trying to do what we think is best for our students and the health, and as trustee Lane said, the health and safety. And these are factors that weigh on all of us. You know, I, we don't, you know, the, the safety of the teachers, the safety of the staff, the safety of the students, and of course, the community. And that's why we also put out those mask up. And we, and I put, we put it out clear, message to our principals and our staff that, you know, masks are mandatory. There's no if, ands, or buts, I mean, we have, you know. It's going to be a little more challenging, we know, with students, but we're going to work with them, it's going to be a little different. But with staff, there should be no question, unless there's a, you know, a health reason that you can't wear it. So we put that message out.
So we're putting a message, we're doing an amazing job, you're doing, your team's doing amazing, you're not putting that, uh, message out. So you get a complaint in a building that so-and-so walks around with a mask. How do we handle that?
Without a mask.
Without a mask.
So it, what we've talked to the principals is this. So is to, it'd be addressed, and we've talked to the union, they know, um, that it'll be addressed directly from the administrator. There will be no if it's reported, it'll be a direct. Now, if I'm in, the reason we have the principal do it, like, you know, if I came in the building and I'm visiting, I won't, if I see it, I would report it to the principal. The reason why is because I don't know if that staff member has some kind of health reason or other reason. So the principal would know that. And so that's what we decided, how we'd handle it, that if other, you know, and obviously, you guys know that my building visits, I told cabinet, we've been limiting them. I still am going, but I've limited it, because I don't think it's responsible, and you and I talked about that. It wouldn't be a responsible thing for me just to be going all over. I did the first week, and then I did go check some learning labs last week, but I'm not doing the normal four hundred and something visits.
We didn't talk about that, I meant, we said, uh, stop.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We need you around. We don't need you out for fourteen days, so. Yeah, so I know in the beginning, we did some, we get, we, I'm going to put it out there, we got some complaints, I have it on the football field. We got some complaints, it started happening at certain buildings, and we were a little bit relaxed. We can't be.
Correct.
We can't be relaxed. I mean, this was, I, I, I respect the fact that, you know, some staff members aren't, for health reasons, can't wear the mask. But what if I'm not comfortable being around that, uh, that staff person, you know, the, the other staff member? How would I handle that?
Yeah.
How would you handle that?
Well, and, yeah, yeah, well, and that's where you'd have to have.
I'm just putting that question out there, you need to take that.
And I don't think we have very many, I think, you know, they'd have to go through HR too, so it's not like, you know.
So to date, I haven't heard of that specific.
Yeah, no, I'm just putting it out there.
But it could probably come up, yes.
You don't have all the answers, I don't expect all the answers, I'm just putting it out there. Because in the beginning, we did get, actually, it was community members said, I walked in the office and nobody's wearing a mask. And we're like, oh, no, they are wearing a mask, they aren't wearing a mask, and we know what happened. They weren't wearing a mask and things happened. Trustee Thorpe?
Well, right along those same lines is, uh, what about the students? What if the students don't wear a mask? If, if they're consistently not wearing a mask, do we say, forget it, we can't have you in the building?
Yes, go home and learn, learn online.
We, we ultimately, I mean, obviously, that wouldn't be our first step, but if it came down to it, that could, you know.
But that, that, it, we need, like, trustee Barry is saying, and everyone else is saying, it needs to be serious.
Sure.
Uh, and it needs to be enforced at some level. And that, that means that people are going to have to tattle on each other from time to time.
Sure.
Yes, trustee Moser.
I, I just think on option three, and even the other options, we're throwing a lot on the teachers as far as doing asynchronous and syn-, and in-person. I, I, I just can't imagine it for a fifth-grade teacher to take all of this in. So we would have to consider either cutting down the in-person time. And that will be also in lieu for safety reasons as well, so.
Can I clarify something there? Jane, this is where Jane and I had the conversation. So here's, here's the, the, the way you have to think about the two-week period. Is that when the t-, students are coming in, for example, on the Monday, it's the same instruction on the Tuesday. Okay, so the same thing would happen for the asynchronous students. So really, you're planning, you're not planning more, because you're doing a double lesson, you're doing the same lesson twice. Both the asynchronous and the, um, uh, in-person. And so the reason you think of the, on that is the two-week, and after Jane and I, we talked about, and Shannon actually helped quite a bit with it. And so then you saw you were still doing the same amount, it's just that you're doing, you know, because you're doing a repeat. Because when you think about it, you're like, yeah, I got a plan for asynchronous every day, and.
But it's the same.
And perfect, but you don't, because it's the, the group comes in, it's the, it's the repeat of the lesson.
Yeah, just with different students.
Sure, but more prep time, like, your point is well-taken, and others have said, if we can give flexibility with, with, you know, not having the full schedule, I think that makes sense, you know, and you convinced me on Friday, Mason, so, because of the people that came to you, so.
The other question that I have is for parents who are unable to pick up their kids at one thirty. So are we providing latchkey programs where they could stay at the school perhaps until three, until they could be picked up?
We don't have that, I mean, we can consider that, we have the, um.
Kids club.
Kids club, we could consider offering that, we could.
It's not in every location, though. But it's throughout, different locations throughout the district.
And we'd all still have to have the buildings cleaned after that four-hour timeframe?
They would be cleaned in the same manner that they would, oh, yeah, if there was kids club, then they have to be cleaned, the touch points have to be cleaned for kids clubs area.
You'd really have to move those kids to another classroom that had not been used yet that day.
Right, or if the cafeteria had been cleaned.
Cafeteria or some other space.
Yeah, kids club, like, I know kids club at Lindbergh meets in the cafeteria. So if there's not lunches, then they could have kids club in the cafeteria without having to, to clean it.
To be honest, I think that would be, just because of numbers, it'd be very challenging, because remember, then you're, you know, you're almost better off. My opinion is to stay with the longer instructional day for parents than just, just the, because the kids clubs itself, I don't think would solve for the majority of parents. Just because of the staff, the ability to have staff, you know, and to have students, because obviously, you got to watch putting them in, in the, how many are you going to put together in certain rooms, you know? Because you'd still have to social distance, so it's not like, so I, that would, you could still do it, but it'd be, that would be more challenging. And I had kids club when I was principal at the ball, so I know how that operates.
Trustee Thorpe?
Will parents be required to pick up their kids if the kid starts to show symptoms during the day?
Yeah, and there's a, there's a COVID location where students would have to go to a quarantine area. Uh, but they, they would have to go while they wait, um, for their parent to get picked up.
That question, I've been looking at the, on what's coming in online, that question was raised online. And then another question was whether the survey was sent to special needs students' parents?
It should have been. If, if. I'll find out in just a second.
Thank you.
Mr. Sealy.
Oh, Mr. Sealy, he, he didn't lead the, um, survey, so.
The element, it should have went to all.
Yeah, it should have gone, yeah.
Do you still have a question?
Yeah, the, the question I had is, for the families that did not select the virtual learning program, but if they are not comfortable at this time with sending their kids, would they still have the ability to have their kids, uh, stay in more of a, you really wouldn't want them to be asynchronous the whole time? What choice would those parents and those families have at this point when we start to bring, uh, students back into the buildings?
So let me make sure I understand, I'm a, um, a parent of an elementary student. The elementary kids go back, and I don't want, like, I'm not comfortable sending my kid back yet.
I, yeah, I didn't want to sign up for a full year, but I'm not comfortable now.
Yeah, so we, so we would enroll them, you want, you want to?
I could just say, we can work that out, but they would be changing teachers. Because you could not have the same teacher that is now in-person.
That's a decision they would make, we've had.
We've had that discussion.
So you would not be able to be asynchronous all the time, you would probably go back, you'd, they'd go into the virtual.
Yeah, they'd go into virtual learning program.
And we'd have to work with the staffing, and that's why we said we couldn't a hundred percent promise. But obviously, if someone doesn't want to go, we're going to work it out somehow.
Yeah, that's why earlier when we were talking about it.
I want to revisit that, we keep saying we're going to work it out somehow. We're going to, if we decide to go ahead and go with one of these options, are we going to put that out there that's an option for parents?
Absolutely, the VLP or returning?
No, no, okay, so I, I chose, I'm, I'm not going to make a one-year commitment. I'm going to trust you and go online right now, uh, just, I mean, that's what, uh, what I, the question I'm hearing. I'm going to trust you and just score online right now, but when you're ready to take my child back into the building, if everything's good, I'm okay with that. But all of a sudden, now, you might be moving a little too quick for what I was thinking. Maybe I was thinking maybe at the end of the semester, maybe I'm thinking when flu season's over, maybe, you know, it's after the holidays. I'm not ready to, to send my kid back to the school. Am I going to have an option to put my son or daughter in the virtual academy?
Yes.
But it won't be with the same.
But it's a different teacher.
But a hundred percent.
Different teacher.
It would have to be, it would have to be.
The idea with the virtual learning program at the beginning was, we were trying to get them to sign up for like a one-year agreement, at least give us a semester. We don't want to make it too easy that I'm going to go to this for a month.
Yeah.
And, all right, now I'm comfortable, I'm going to do this, but then I'm going to flip again.
No, that's.
So that's, that's all I'm, I'm really asking, and I know it's not an easy.
It's not, it's got to be a nightmare for, for, for staffing logistics, I can imagine.
For the parents, for the, the teachers, for everybody.
But the, the thing that keeps coming up is, your, your son or daughter would be leaving, let's make it very clear, yes, but that's a parent decision.
And so we want, let's just say the other way, that I signed up for VLP, I'm very comfortable now, I trust, I trust Dearborn, and I trust what they're doing, I want my kid back in. So we are going to do everything possible to get that kid back to the school that they. So we're gonna do everything possible to get that kid back to the school that they originate from. But if that, if this is a month into it and those classes are in full effect and we have exactly twelve kids and twelve kids. In each of the third grade classrooms at that school, but we have this building over here that only has seven third grade kids. And it's the closest building to over here and we already have transportation worked out and everything. Then we're, then probably what we'll say is that the third grade at your homeschool for this year is full. But we have this option right here, so you can still, we want your kids back in school. We can put them at this building for this year and then they can go back to their homeschool next year.
Provide transportation for that?
If that happens, that's the other point, is that if they, if, if we're going and, and they say, I, I don't want VLP anymore, I want my kid to come in person. If we're able to provide transportation, we will, but there's already route set up for the kids that are already going to school. So these are things that we're gonna do everything we can to make work for every kid, but it's something to consider that we have to say like, hey, maybe. It might be tough if we can get a route that works to the building next door, the building down the street, we're gonna do that. Cause we wanna, you know, that's what our service.
People are gonna hear that we're gonna give them transportation to uh like a school of choice kind of thing.
Yeah, cause like with school of choice, well, we don't have school of choice anymore, but boundary line exemption.
Yeah.
We would say the transportation's on your own.
On your own.
Yeah, now this is different times, like everything.
Yeah, but I'm worried about if you, we start putting all these options out there, then everybody's gonna hear what they want to hear.
That's usually how it goes, yeah.
That fits, that fits their idea of how they want to return.
And to kind of address trustee Thorpe's uh point, uh, it might be a good idea just to have set up this, like a certain period. During this period, you have an option, either to opt out, opt in. Now we'll make it a little bit easier.
That's beautiful idea, yes.
Leaving here, it might be an easy decision. We can't wait like a month into this and two months and people still want to move around.
I agree.
Okay.
Because the original, the original statement was, once you decide a virtual learning, you're in for the year.
Yeah.
And we molded that a little bit, but that was the contract that parents had to be aware of.
Okay. Yes.
So now we're looking at secondary and the, there's three options all on this one slide here and so you've got. Two groups with students, option one, two groups of students attending three hours. Uh, with sixty-minute class periods per day. And they attend every other day, so three hours every other day for two different groups of kids. And it takes two days for them to get through one full cycle of their six courses. So I get to see my six teachers over a two-day period. Um, that's with four to six feet, oh, you want me to hold that?
I'm sorry, for clarification, when it says attending three hours, you're using hours as class. They're synonymous.
Courses, yeah, you're right.
All right.
Thank you.
Just making sure that we're not mixing up hours and hours.
Yeah, no, courses, let's do courses. Okay, and um, that's with. It's important that we say four to six feet social distancing because the reality is, is we're gonna do our absolute best to do six feet social distancing. But there may be pockets and it really depends on how many students end up in the virtual learning program. And so Shannon led the, Shannon Peterson, she led the committee and, and um they all went to different buildings to actually look at every building and say. What can their classrooms accommodate? How many students? Okay.
Do we have an average number of students for that distancing for most of the classrooms?
I'm sure I'll get a message here, one second.
You're asking how many kids could be in the class?
Be in the classroom, yeah, because I don't even know at the element, I, we say we've got an average of maybe twenty-eight and fourteen are gonna get us that, but I don't think.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm sure that um they, it was pretty in-depth and they did an entire chart of every building that said. That provided that kind of information.
Okay.
So I don't want to say a number, but we'll find, I'll find out. Ten to twelve.
So we're saying that we have high school classes that only have twenty to twenty-four students on average? That seems kind of low from what.
Well, no, because you, that would be, when she's saying how many, it's not necessarily saying you're cutting it in half, you could be cutting it in a, in a.
Well, this is, this is two groups, so I would assume that it would be cutting it in half.
Yeah.
Oh, with the two group?
This is a two-group option and option two is also two groups. Um, but that's why it's four to six feet social distancing, is because there are gonna be pockets where it's gonna end up being fourteen kids. Or fifteen kids, and again, it depends on the numbers of students that end up going to VLP and don't report to.
Yeah, but that's making an assumption that we're gonna, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a decision on, on a hope.
So she's saying ten, and so that was kind of my point.
Twelve max.
For, for social distancing appropriately, appropriately.
Yeah, so we're not gonna have social distancing.
But that, that's where I was saying, if it was in three groups, then you could, but not.
That would be option three right here. Option three is the three groups of students, oops, sorry. Uh, three groups with students attending all their courses for forty minutes each, each course forty minutes. And it's, but they're only attending every third day, so if I'm, and this gives us six feet social distancing guaranteed. Because in this option, you're dividing the kids that are attending in person into three groups and so then the numbers of students per course. Per classroom um are, are lessened. So the third option, six feet social distancing, options one and two are two different groups. So really, um, the difference between the first two options is that the first option sixty minutes. It takes two days for the students to see all their teachers and in option two, it takes four days for them to see. Um, all their, all their teachers.
Through all the classes and, and how many? All students, which I have for the, after, with the third one. We shorten the time. Every, it's, there's only five days in the week, so every third day, you've got people who are only.
So this is what it looks like. Let me go to the next slides, if that's okay, I can come back to this. So I did, there's a slide for each option. And this one, hang on, right here. This is every third, this is every, this is when you have three groups of kids. And the second bullet point, each group attends every third day, so in their first week. A group goes on Monday, B group goes on Tuesday, C group goes on Wednesday. A group goes on Thursday, B group goes on Friday and C group goes on Monday and so on. And then with this, we, we have Zoom in the room for all the options, which is that. I'm the teacher, I'm teaching the kids in front of me, but I have my webcam on and I have my Zoom meeting on for the kids that are at home.
Who would be in the same class cohort.
And that, that, those are the other half of their kids or the other third of their kids, depending on which option we.
So will they be teaching something different then on each day? Because those kids are gonna be coming back in. I'm kind of confused on what they would be.
Oh, right, because they did it on Zoom.
Because they already did it on Zoom.
That's a great question, trustee Petrikov. It could be reinforced when they come in. I can't imagine that they would do a different lesson. Yeah.
I mean, they're already only going in every third day and then they're getting a repeat of what they already looked at on Zoom for the other.
For the other one, they're getting already, yeah, they've already been exposed to it.
Yeah.
The, the instructional material's already been delivered via Zoom when they were home, so now they go in person. It could be that the teacher does in person, checks for understanding in the beginning of the class and then either moves on or doesn't move on.
Then the group that's doing Zoom for that one would.
Would have to do that, yeah, that's a good point.
That, this just doesn't uh.
Oh, I have, I have a high school principal messaging.
Doesn't compute.
Zoom, Zoom in the room, more content. Okay, let me see what this one says.
Oh, I'm misunderstanding.
Oh, the ones on Zoom are the virtual learning. Kids, yeah.
Coming in at all.
Who are not coming in at all.
Okay.
Ah, that makes more sense.
So the, the teachers that were doing the virtual learning program. For the high school.
Would also be in.
Secondary are no longer needed to be doing virtual?
Well, they're not doing ver- they're not doing virtual at this point anyways, high school, right?
Virtual high school has to be happening.
Yeah, the, what would happen with the currently, so the high school, so if they came in, you would have some kids that would be online and some would be live during the lesson.
Shannon's gonna be joining us in just a second. She took the lead on, on these.
The question is.
But they, they won't be part of the virtual learning program.
Secondary, are we running the virtual, from what I understood, the beginning of the program that, no, we held off.
No, it's not.
We, we, we've held off, our plan is to implement it though.
Okay, yeah, so right now currently their high schoolers are not in a virtual academy.
There's no separate anything right now.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Shannon just joined us if you want to ask more questions. Shannon, do you want to, will you please explain the Zoom and the, Zoom in the room, which was my.
So um the Zoom in the room was.
We've held off, our plan is to implement it though. Right, there's no separate anything right now. Oh, she's on delay. Shannon just joined us if you want to ask more questions. Shannon, what is, will you please explain?
So Zoom in the, um, became. Created actually in the high school principal meeting. And that was really so that students that were home would see the same content. If we go to three days, we didn't want students waiting three days to get new content.
She's on a loop.
So just that experience answers a lot of questions.
You were getting some feedback because I was watching it too, so I apologize for that. Um, Zoom in the room was an idea that was brought about by the high school um committee that we had. And their thought was that um it would be easier for teachers to teach. Um, through Zoom, using their smart board of the students that were present in the room as well as the students that were at home. Obviously not for the full-time period, but to give a short mini lesson. And then independent work and the students that were in the room would get their independent work and assistance face-to-face. And the students that were home would really start working on that asynchronous or independent work at the same time. I will say that during count week, um, the feedback that we got was the, there was better participation from the secondary students. When they saw all of their classes synchronously in one day versus the asynchronous and synchronous time, so. Uh, they really felt that this would help students get more content. And more assistance on a regular basis than waiting every third day.
So, so I'm trying to run a meeting here and got three colleagues in front of me, trying to read them. Every once in a while, trustee Thorpe would start waving at me to look back here. We have a Zoom meeting going on here. How is a teacher's, how is a teacher expected to have twelve students and?
It'll be difficult, but it's being done in other places. Um, I know that for, it is being done, it's not the most optimal, but um. If you get your technology going and the cameras set up, you know, we'll have to work through some of that, you know, with the teacher at the front.
I got three colleagues in front of me and three on a Zoom meeting, I'm having a difficult time. I'm not on my phone, text messaging, I don't get it or anything, I'm trying to figure out. What the heck's going on and it's just six people. Okay, yeah, these are, these are options, I understand that.
Okay, so I think that's it. So this slide is, is about cleaning. That we use EPA-approved disinfectant and COVID-approved disinfectant and that, what's required, so that's just. Background information, which we have talked about many times about our cleaning processes.
Can we, can we revisit that cleaning process, please?
Absolutely.
For the longest time, I'm hearing a deep clean, I'm thinking to myself, oh, wow, okay, this is awesome. I'm comfortable sending my son into that classroom. Because now I'm hearing, well, it's what the custodians usually do, but they're gonna be wearing masks and spraying, you know, I, we talk about it. Did you want to ask your question now or you want to wait?
Uh, no, no, I, I can wait.
Okay, go ahead, Mason, please.
So it's required that the student desks have to be wiped down with either an EPA-approved disinfectant dilu- or diluted bleach solution after every class period. So that's like tabletops, light switches, um, in the elementary grades, it would be that like. Um, the same thing, but the toys, certain toys, it would, it wouldn't look the same like we said earlier. They wouldn't have all the things that they would typically touch in an elementary, especially a kindergarten classroom, it would look probably a little more scarce than it typically does. For this reason. And then the frequently touched surfaces, including light switches, doors, benches, bathrooms, and they have to undergo a, a cleaning every, at least every four hours. With either the same EPA-approved disinfectant or COVID, uh, COVID-approved disinfectant as well. Um, hours with students are short enough that this could happen at the end of the day. Custodians will clean the bathrooms hourly as the students will not be using them during transition time. And then also required is that like libraries, the computer la- labs, arts and other hands-on classrooms must undergo cleaning after every class period. With the same solution. Um, and the, and teacher sprays the desks and students wipe the desk with a paper towel. So the, the teacher's in charge of the spraying, because we know what could happen when you give a spray bottle to a student at times. Um, and the, the student wipes down the desks and wipes down the area that they were in. And I know that um teachers have been doing so as well in the learning labs.
Trusty Moses?
As far as physical education, are, are we gonna be offering that in elementary and secondary or that's not gonna be offered?
Um, no, we will continue offering it. All of our specials, we have not reduced any staffing for specials. And our plan is to continue offering as many specials opportunities that possible for students. PE is gonna look different. I'm not sure um what it's gonna look like in person. Right now, online, it's, you know. Of, of virtual, you know, do this, do that, and I was, I was with a PE teacher this, this past uh weekend. And she was sharing some of the things that she's doing virtually. Um, but yes, they'll get PE. If it's gonna be PE in the traditional way that we know it, I, I don't know yet.
Music would have to be very different also, because they've said that, that singing is one of the things that is.
And I did send out a question to the, like, um, I'm on a listserv for HR directors in the tri-county area. And everyone, that's like the go-to, so hey, what are you guys doing for this? How are you handling that? Um, and Dr. Malek was part of many groups. Um, and so I did put the music question out there because the music department has asked us and we don't have a straight answer yet. Um, but we're wo- working on it and I said, what is being done for your specials, because singing um is part of the COVID, you know. Could increase the COVID spread and um also like flute and, um, what is it, air instruments? I'm not a musician, but you know, like the saxophone or the flute or anything that you're blowing into is gonna emit, could emit germs. And so we don't know how that would look, but I can say that like the extra pay assignments, they are doing honors choir. Um, as long as they could give a plan for how they would implement it virtually. And these are the extras, these are the extracurricular options that we have other than, than sports, the non-athletic ones. Um, and Lisa Meyer and her team have come up with plans to do that virtually and, um, but as far as like the music classes go, I really don't know. I can tell you my elementary, my first graders have a ball with their, with their music teacher, virtually included.
Just to lighten things up a little bit, I was showing a house a few weeks ago and there was a, I think it was a third grader in the corner. All of a sudden, he left and jumped on his bike and took off. When he came back, I'm like, why'd you leave class? He goes, oh, that was my gym teacher. Trustee Petrikov, you still got?
Well, I just, I just have a, a question when we move forward. For the um secondary, can we, can we split the motion and have a motion for what we might do? So that we don't have to move on.
We can do whatever we want.
So I just want to make sure that, because everything is being given now.
Between the lines, I'm with you on that one, so, yeah, okay. Trustee Thorpe?
I'm gonna put a couple of questions in together, talking again about the secondary. What are the thoughts about starting, it mentioned it earlier, sixth and the ninth? Because in most middle and high schools, they would have the buildings to themselves. Second question along that line is, not all of our buildings are organized the same way, so. If Salina, you got a K-three and a four-eight, so would we really be putting the whole K-three possibly back into Salina at once? Whereas for a lot of other buildings, they won't have the fourth and fifth in there. And then what about Lori, which is K-eight?
Wow, those are great questions.
As far, so if you make a decision on K-three, then we would just put wherever the K-three is?
Well, I mean, K-three would look beautifully in every building in my eyes except for Salina, because we're much closer to a capacity at that one building. If you said, uh, well, then you've got Salina's four-eight, well, then you could bring the fourth graders back into that building. But would you bring the sixth graders in to Lori? But would you bring the sixth graders in to Lori? Uh, cuz they don't have the building to themselves, whereas Stout, Smith, Woodworth would.
And McCollum units two is our K-eight.
What I think I would be saying is that we need to have flexibility in what we're going to say, is that if we.
Gotcha.
Really, we're looking at, this is the percent of the students we are, are assigning back into the buildings at this time. And then for some of the elementaries, it would be probably like maybe a K-three or K-two, but for Slina, it might just be a K-one. Um, or again, empty buildings for the upper, upper grade levels. Why do we have to hesitate when we're starting the elementary and, and we could still say, well, the sixth, the ninth graders could probably go back to those buildings? So just things that have been in my head, whereas I've been reading through everything.
Sure, since we're on a subject, uh, when we say early elementary, I know we talked about this earlier. Is it K through two? Is it K-three? Uh, I guess the question, that's, that's gonna be, you know, difficult for you to answer. If we were just gonna do, what I'm hearing trustee Thorpe say, if we're gonna concentrate on maybe bringing in fifty percent of the students in the beginning, is it more important to bring in the third graders, keep the kindergartners at home? I'm just putting these questions out there for discussion later because I'm gonna forget, so, we'll get to all those, uh. I think what we wanna do right now, uh, if there's like direct questions that you want something clarified in the report, I'm gonna go through the, down the line right now, we don't wanna get into the discussion with plans, what have you, Dr. Mead?
Uh, just like clarification on option two. So option two is two full days, Monday and Tuesday, the same kids. And then, uh, Wednesday, Thursday with alternate, uh, the next set of kids. And in other words, the classes are split. And then Friday is a, an additional day that A or B goes on, so.
I, this is our.
We're talking about, we're, we're, we're talking about transportation, and if the kids are doing an option two Monday and Tuesday, then they, transportation's not a problem, they're there all day. So then, my suggestion is that on Wednesday would be the optional day instead of Friday. So we'd have Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Wednesday would be the day for cleaning and cleansing. And you would only have to do it on Wednesday because the same kids would be there Thursday and Friday and Monday and Tuesday. So, uh, is that, do I have it right, except for the addition of Wednesday?
No, I'm lost.
Trustee Mead.
Okay.
Are you referring to elementary or high school, or, I'm sorry, elementary or secondary?
Elementary.
All right.
Elementary, that's what I thought.
Because that's the first, that's the first phase, right?
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so on the first phase, option two is Monday and Tuesday, the same kids all day, correct?
Correct.
All right, then Wednesday and Thursday, it's the other half of the kids all day.
That's right.
And Friday is the option, all right, so my, so I, I understand that now, and my suggestion is that we think about making Wednesday the optional day rather than Friday, but it's just, as long as I understand it, I can still make that suggestion later. I just wanna make sure I understand option two.
So what I wanna do right now, if there's this clarification on the document for, for Mason or Dr. Maleko, uh, at this point, then I wanna hear from our, you know, parents and, and the public. Then we'll go into suggestions and changing the plans or what have you, trustee Thorpe.
What would, what would be happening with staff that are split between buildings?
Uh, so staffing, it's a puzzle, so we're gonna make it work. Um, we struggled with the, the puzzle. You know, we had some enrichment teachers that were upset that they had to teach, you know, they're used to teaching one type of enrichment and they had to teach another, one section of, you know, they, they usually teach fifth grade enrichment and now they have to teach one section of first grade enrichment, for example. So that, those are the challenges that come with, this is your staff, this is what they're highly qualified to teach. And these are your needs. And so it's a, quite a complex puzzle, I, and so we would make it work as best of our ability, but there usually aren't, everyone won't be a hundred percent excited about what they're teaching. But that doesn't affect the majority, it affects a small percent. And that's, that's just goes based on highly qualified, like I, I told Dr. Maleko early on, I was like, well, staffing in normal times is a puzzle, this is like a 3D puzzle. Um, that's moving. But yeah, we just, we just try to make it work, and so the, the staff that's split between two buildings, we have to plan according to that.
Okay, so.
To be continued.
To be continued, exactly. Trustee Lane, do you have any questions or clarifications needed on the document, on the report?
Well, I, you know, here's the way I approached it, rather than thinking, uh, uh, cuz it's like such a big moving, um, you know, you affect one piece here and then it ripples all out from all the way through the system. So I was trying to think of it in terms of principles that I prefer for a plan rather than in thinking, do I want option one, two, or three, and I know probably there's loads of people right now screaming at their TVs as they're watching this for us to choose this, choose that. I'd like to think that, that what we, what we will finally end up with is reducing as much as possible exposure and cross-contamination. So I would like students first starting at maybe K to two, then slowly moving it up. Uh, I'd like students to have less mixing because I do envision that we will, we'll have fitful starts and stops. So I'd like to contain contamination if there's exposure from students and staff, so I'd like less mixing of populations, I'd like the groups to be as small as we can get them. Um, I'd like to have less cleaning, not that I want less physical cleaning, but the less that we, so Dr. Mead's ideas with the, with a Wednesday deeper cleaning, I'd like to have uh, a day in between Monday, Tuesday group, Wednesday, th, Wednesday, Friday group. Uh, because it gives us more time for virus to dissipate, less touch points. We're gonna try to do the cleaning, but to me, it's all about mitigating exposure, reducing risk and reducing, um, interaction, so. Longer hours I would like, less touch points, less mixing of population, less, uh, uh, cross-conta, contamination. And above everything else, my preference is a slow start, always using the metrics that we identified as whether we move ahead. We need at least two weeks, maybe three weeks, to have students come, try it out, and then we get our feedback and make a decision. That's the way I'm thinking of it.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald. We're not, we're not changing anything, we just wanna get clarifications on your thoughts and any questions on the document that you just wanted to report.
I like the thoughts that, uh, trustee Lane just gave as far as like encompassing what is important, what we need to, but I also know that the committee did a lot of work coming up with these proposals. As far as clarification, I kinda understand everything that's been, um, presented, but still a tremendous puzzle. So at this point, clarification I don't need. Go ahead.
To be continued, right, exactly. Dr. Mead.
I'm fine with where we are.
Okay, great, thank you. Trustee Moser.
I'd like to hear some more from the parents, so.
Okay, no, it's, I'm just, is there any clarification you had?
No.
So, I mean, we went, we stopped Mason like every two minutes, asked for a question, I just wanna make sure we're good moving forward, okay, trustee Petrok.
No, I, I've got as much clarification as I need for right now.
Good old, uh, trustee Thorpe.
I'm good for now.
Okay, great.